Eduardo, can we take roll call, please?
Mayor, I just seen him here in the weight room.
Beautiful, perfect timing.
You're gonna call the meeting to order?
Yes, please, calling the meeting to order, and if we could, please take roll call.
Councilmember Schneider.
Sorry, here, here.
Uh, councilmember Oliver.
Present.
Councilmember Fung.
Here.
Vice Mayor Papin.
Here.
Mayor Oliva.
Here.
All members of the city council are present.
Okay, can we, should we stand for the pledge of allegiance? Councilmember Fung, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please? I'll start. I pled, oh, there you go.
There you go. I was just looking for that button, sorry.
Thank you.
I pledge to the flag, United States of America.
And to the republic.
Republic for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So at this time, uh, city manager, Tom Williams, can you explain the process by which we are gonna take this meeting?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Oliva and members of the city council in the community. My name is Tom Williams, city manager here at the city of Millbrae. So tonight's meeting is a continuation of our public hearing process to transition the city from at-large elections to district-based elections. This is a public hearing number four. We've had more public hearings, more community outreach, but technically I want to announce that this is our, our public hearing number four, which is the first introduction of three iterations of, of maps or, or alternative map scenarios that our consulting team, redistricting partners has prepared. And I just want to just communicate to the city council and to the public that the, this is the very first rough draft of, of three alternatives that our demographer has used to base and, and, and generate maps based on population, right, and the distribution of population to keep the deviation right around, you know, five percent, six percent. As we discussed in previous meetings, the law allows us to have a 10% deviation by district and population, but best practices are to try to achieve that 5%. And so we still have a lot of work to do. We have a series of, uh, public meetings, public outreach meetings, starting again this Saturday at 11:00 AM over in the temporary community center where, where hopefully by that time we will have the software package from redistricting partners that the citizens can use to draw maps and, and look at the balance of population within those draft boundaries. So I want everyone, and I want to be clear that this is not a fait accompli this evening. This is just, you know, the first iterations out of the gate. We still need to hear, you know, from the community on the community of interest forms. We've received 30 of those to date. And also now that I think the community will see kind of these lines on paper, it will help generate some, some, you know, ideas that we can receive from the communities of interest as we move towards the final completion, which by law needs to be, uh, the maps need to be adopted by March 1st. The last city council meeting that we have scheduled is for February 22nd. But if we need a little bit, you know, more time and a few more days between February 22nd and March 1st, that, that gives us a little bit of buffer. But the goal is to have the city council adopt the final five districts at the February 22nd city council meeting. So we'll have plenty of time, you know, to continue with the community outreach and, and have folks draw maps as, as, as they, you know, represent a community of interest. So if there's no further questions of me, I'd be happy to hand it over to, um, the team at redistricting partners that we've retained to, uh, help us through this process.
Any questions, council? Awesome, let's go.
Okay, and I think Chris, is it Chafee?
Chafee, yes, I'm, hello, thank you, Mr. Williams, for the introduction. My name's Chris Chafee. I'm the chief operating officer with redistricting partners and I'm joined by my colleague Bryn Hammerberg, our redistricting manager. And I've prepared a presentation for you, which I'll start sharing now. And it, so thank you for having me here.
Hey, Chris, I apologize, mayor, I apologize, we forgot to introduce the interpreters.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So I'll stop sharing.
And so I'll hand it over to our city clerk. Yeah, I apologize, I just missed that. So, Mr. Eduardo Gonzalez, our acting city clerk, if he can introduce our interpreters, both in Mandarin and in Spanish.
Yes, thank you. We do have, uh, translation services available this evening in Mandarin and in Spanish. If I can ask Ting, our Chinese interpreter or Mandarin interpreter, please give the public instructions on how to access translation services. Thank you. Can I please ask our Spanish interpreter Andrea, do you mind please notifying the public on how they can access services in Spanish?
Buenas, buenas tardes. Tenemos servicio de interpretación simultánea disponible en el lenguaje de español en esta tarde. Para conseguir ese, este servicio, por favor, le hace click en el botón de abajo, en la pantalla de abajo, este, y ahí puede perdón, ahí puede, este, usted escoger si quiere ir del inglés al español o del español al inglés para cualquier servicio que usted necesite. También le pedimos que si usted necesita servicio de interpretación, que por favor pueda hablar despacio y claro para que el intérprete le pueda traducir efectivamente.
Thank you, Andrea. Uh, thank you to our interpreters. Uh, sorry about that, Chris. Um, I'll go ahead and I'll turn it over to you again. Thank you.
Thank you. It's always very important to have the translation start at the beginning of the meeting. So thank you again for having me and Bryn here to, to go over these initial maps, um, as Mr. Williams, um, artfully discussed. These are just the, the beginnings and there are really supposed to be iterative, um, maps that change with, um, public comment and city council direction. So let me share my, um, presentation again. So thank you again for having us, um, to present. We always like to start our meetings, um, with the basic building blocks that we look to, um, in redistricting to create these city council lines. Um, and we use actually throughout California for pretty much every local agency that's redistricting. Um, and the five principles, traditional principles that we really look to is, of course, the first thing is making relatively equal-sized districts based on people, not citizens. Um, and at the local level, we're given, um, a, a really important tool by the courts that allows us to have the smallest to the largest district be, um, a difference of population of 10%. So we can use that 10% total deviation tool to ensure the, the following criteria can be followed. The second one, it's pretty simple. It's the idea of each district has to be contiguous. You don't have an island of one district and another. You can basically draw each district line, um, with, with the pencil never leaving the page. Those are the, the two kind of technical, um, criteria. But the third criteria that really drives the registering process at every level in California, um, both under the Fair Maps Act and, um, at the statewide level under, um, Prop 11 and 20, um, is the idea that we need to maintain communities of interest. Um, these are communities of interest really are defined by the public. Um, and they're the idea of an area within the city that should be held together and whole within a district because they share some, um, cultural or economic or social bond that is important for them to be kept whole, to be represented fairly, um, going forward. And that's what we really look to when drawing these lines. The, the fourth criteria is looking to other, um, either census, census designated places or other governmental boundaries. Sometimes unified school district lines or other agency lines that, that matter to the agency. Um, and the fifth criteria, the, the lowest criteria that we really follow is the idea of trying to create compact districts, both in appearance and function. So we like circles and squares if possible. But it's really hard, just something to, to, I think, to start in, um, the city of Millbrae because the Census Bureau has created a lot of kind of oddly shaped census tracts and census blocks, excuse me, um, which you'll see in these, um, in the drafts that come, come next. So let's go move on. So what we've produced, um, is, is three draft maps, maps A, B, and C. These again are just the beginning, um, process of the draft maps where we're really looking for public and, um, city council input on, um, where the lines really should be. And what we're finding in a lot of the local registering efforts is prior to the introduction of draft maps, there's not a lot of, um, communities of interest. But once you in, in, introduce, um, draft maps and start dividing the city into council districts, that's really when the public, um, really starts getting interested in the process and really, um, calls in participates. So we're really looking forward to hopefully a, a very robust public engagement going forward. So the first draft map, and I'll just move to it, um, is represented here. Um, and you can see that it's basically there, these, these started with districts one and two. District one, includes the Meadows, Cappuccino, and Willita Hills, um, neighborhoods and a portion of Green Hills. And it's really surrounding, um, this, this, this park on the north side of the city. Um, and then district two is really the eastern portion of the city, kind of bounded by the city limits and around El Camino and drops down. It includes Airport Park, Marina Vista Park and Bayside Manor and portions of Millwood and Green Hills. District three, and you can see that, um, in this plan that you have sort of like east-west districts, um, district three, four, and five. District three includes the central portion of the city, including Glenview Highlands and Meadow Glen and portions of Telescope Hills and Highlands. District four, um, includes Mills, Mills Estate and portions of Highland. And district five includes portions of Highlands, Telescope Hill, and Meadow Glen. And you can see that this plan kind of has these three districts, north, south, or sorry, east, west in, in orientation. You'll see that each of the plans changes that orientation of, um, districts three, four, and five. Now, looking at, um, the total deviation, so we have the ability to get to that total deviation of 10%. This plan keeps us well below. Its total deviation is at 6.3%. Um, and the other thing I think of note is that in district four, you have, um, the Asian citizen voting age population above 50%. It's at 54.5%. And you'll see in each of the, each of the plans, um, the district four, um, council seat has an Asian CVAP of, of above 50%. So it's a, basically a section two seat. Now, um, map B, also looking at neighborhoods as a divider, um, creates a different orientation with two north-south seats kind of hugging El Camino and then having kind of three seats that are north-south, or sorry, that are east-west, um, above the 280. Um, and I think one thing to note is that district one, um, is, is identical in each of the plans in A, B, and C. Um, and that's really because we tried to use, um, Helen Drive, um, as the divider between one and three and, and create like, uh, a good, I guess, division, we, we thought from our view, um, in this part of the city to keep the, the, um, the park all within district one and then the, the community surrounding it. The biggest changes you can see here is we have these two north-south districts. So, um, district two is very similar to plan, Plan A. District five, of course, is very different. District five runs just south of El Camino, um, stretching nearly the southern border of the city. So, sorry. Taking in parts of Highlands, Telescope Hills, Meadow, Meadow Glen, Green Hills, and Millwood. District four, sorry, um, is, includes Mills Estate and portions of Highland. And district three in this one is similar to Plan A, includes the central portion of the city, again, Greenview Highlands, Meadow Glen, Telescope Hills, and portions of Highlands. Again, district four is your majority-minority district. This time it's at, um, 55.6%. So a little bit higher, um, Asian CVAP. The, um, the total deviation of this, this plan is at 6.8%. So still well with, well below the 10% threshold, um, that's legally allowed. The final, um, draft, draft C, again, looking at neighborhoods in, in, in Millbrae creates yet again a, a different, um, kind of architecture for just districts three, four, and five. But district one remains the same. District two is very similar to the, um, to its configuration in, um, Plan A. District three, though, drops down and it becomes closer, I guess, a more southern district. Um, and in this, in this configuration, it includes Glenview Highlands and portions of Telescope Hills and Meadow, Meadow Glen and the Highlands, where district four, um, includes Mills Estate and portions of Highlands. And district five includes portions of Highlands, Telescope Hills, and Meadow Glen. Again, this is, this total deviation of this plan is at 6.4%. With district four, again, having an Asian CVAP of 54.4%, making it a section two seat. What's next? So the next, the next, um, process, again, as Mr. Williams has, um, outlined, is the next hearing, I believe, is on January 25th, um, to go through revisions to these draft plans. Ideally, the, the council and the public would, would discuss these plans, talk through changes they, they would like to be made going forward. The other thing about this meeting is I do have, um, HTML or Google map versions of these districts of, of these plans, so we can really dive down deep into, um, roads and other borders that are made up in each of these plans. And I can share those, share that, my screen and we can, um, discuss any changes or any, um, borders within each plan. And that's the conclusion of my, um, presentation. And now I, um, give it back to council.
So I think at this time, um, what we'd like to do is possibly have some council comments before we open up to public. And from there, Gina, excuse me, councilmember Papin, would you like to start? Let's keep in mind, council, that we do have an audience here, and this is not our last meeting. So, uh, please, let's limit the comments and let's not repeat what says for one another. We're a team here. Councilmember Papin, please.
Thank you. Can we get some people to mute? Lot of background noise. Oh, great, thanks. So correct me if I'm wrong, um, Chris, but we don't have to actually accept all these. If the public came up with something different that may be better suited and met the legal requirements, we could actually deviate altogether. Is that correct?
Yeah, you can throw all these plans out if you like, um, public plans that are submitted. It's, it's completely iterative, so.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, I had actually seen one that, uh, a member of the public put together, which designated the districts in such a way that every district had a park and every district had a school. So that the public interest would be diverse, yet everyone would have a common interest there. And this map that I had seen actually came, used Central Park as a center. So it was almost set up like a, um, a wagon wheel instead of these various blocks here. So how do we, and I, again, this is only one I've seen, but the public, I think, um, put some real effort into this. Um, so if we were to, and we haven't seen all these, the public reiterations. But I would be interested in something that showed a little more diversity in that realm because that seems to make sense to me that we are making the city as a whole have common interests and a park and a school would seem to cover a lot of that basis. I don't know how the demographics would work out. Hopefully they would work out similarly. But, um, that would be my thought on these original maps. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first question, I've had a lot of members of the public say, where is the software from, uh, redistricting partners so that they can draw their own maps? At least one has been using the county database for county redistricting. So I'm really disappointed that that isn't there. The other thing is when I tried to look at the three maps and, um, you know, most of us are very familiar with the streets because we've walked them all. It's really hard to tell the streets where you've divided. So my question is too, if we're drawing districts along streets, that puts neighbors across the street from each other in different districts. And is there a way that perhaps we can use backyards that keep neighborhoods more intact? So that's question number two. Question number three, it seems that Highlands, and full disclosure, I live in Highlands, is the neighborhood that seems to be chunked up and repositioned everywhere, including one map that takes the 400 block of Palm, Elder, and Poplar, of which we have, not Elder, but the other two, huge traffic collision issues and basically puts us in a neighborhood that doesn't have, or a district that doesn't have that problem. So I'm, I'm kind of, I'm split because I know Highlands is big, not by population, but by size. But it really seems like Highlands neighborhood was short, given the short thrift, short shift. But really and truly, I'm, I'm concerned that the public has not had the ability to do maps, and I want that fixed.
So Chris, did you want to address those three questions?
Sure, I can, so we're, I'm sorry about District R, we're trying to get that up and, and we hope to have it up by Saturday for your public hearing. Your second question, um, was about using backyards. Unfortunately, most of the census blocks use streets as their dividing lines. Also, you can use creeks and other natural boundaries. So we're, we're pretty much, from a population standpoint, because that's what redistricting is, um, is focused on, trying to create as balanced districts as possible. Um, we're really stuck with the census block geography. And so I don't think we're gonna be able to use backyards. Um, well, most cities and agencies really look to use major thoroughfares where either the, you know, the north or the south are in different districts or the east and the west, depending on, of course, the way the, the road, um, travels. Um, and your third question about Highlands, um, I think, um, if Highlands is Highlands, I think you're right, got carved up a bit in each of the plans. And one of the problems is that there's not enough population in Mills Estate, um, to create a full district. So it's, it's a question of what, where it, what Mills State, what the Mills Estate area of city, where it goes. If it goes north or goes kind of around and comes up and takes in like Bayside Manor or other portions of the city. Um, and I think with our map constructions, really, we thought it made more sense to have kind of the, area of the city along the 101, between the 101 and the, and El Camino, to be in one district, um, as much as possible. And with that choice, it meant that Highlands had to be split and added into the Mills Estate district. But of course, there's all, there's a, there's a million ways to create, um, draft plans. So I'm hoping that maybe we have a really good plan from the public, or we can go back to the drawing board and create another iteration that tries to keep Highlands as whole as possible.
Well, if it will help, I'm gonna tell you, I will not vote for any of these. I can see Highlands being cut into two, but cutting us into three are three different things when we share a host of community interests is wrong. That's my opinion.
Thank you, Councilmember Schneider. Councilmember Oliver?
Thank you. Um, just to follow up on that last question, um, or, Mr. Chafee, are you saying that we cannot divide census blocks or census tracts?
So.
Or we just wouldn't have a precise estimate of the population if we did?
Yeah, I think the, that's the we do not like to split census blocks. It creates a lot of problems down the line. Anytime you want to use the, any census information as a city, um, you don't continue to have good census numbers or, um, or information that's produced by the census. You can split census blocks, um, but if you're anywhere near the 10% total deviation in your final plan and you split a census block, it really makes it's really difficult to decide whether, what your total population is because it's a judgment call on, on our part, on what, how to divide the population within the block. So we can split census blocks. We, we just it's the best practice not to, so that we can really, um, have that whole population number with, um, a high level of confidence. Whereas if we split blocks, we wouldn't.
Okay, that makes sense. And, and I think, you know, I don't think any of us here would like to get close to that 10% deviation, I, I would think. But I, I think I agree with Councilmember Schneider that if possible, I would personally prefer not to split, you know, down, uh, the middle of the street if, if we can avoid that. That being said, I am a little disappointed that there's not much variety between these maps. These all sort of look like, you know, three versions of the same map. For example, I mentioned District One is identical on all three maps, and then Districts Two and Four don't change very much. They change a little bit. Looks like it's mostly three and five that, that change the most. And I think of these options, probably, uh, the one that I would prefer the most is probably Plan C. It has multiple districts that are along the downtown, um, El Camino corridor. But that being said, I, you know, do, uh, I think agree with Councilmember Papin that we need to look at maps submitted by the public as well, uh, before we, you know, signal that we're leaning in one way or another. And it would have been nice to have that mapping tool available before, um, this meeting. That's all that I have. Now, there's also comment about, I think District 20 mentioned a large park. Um, that's actually a golf course and it's, it's a private club. So I don't think there's necessarily any, you know, neighborhood attachment to that golf course. Just a comment on that. Thank you.
I might disagree with that a little bit, Councilmember Oliver. But with that being said, I just want to make sure that council understands that there's no vote tonight. This is just, you know, critiquing or opinions. And so I would hope that everybody's constructive in their, in their opinions. Um, and we'll go to Councilmember Fung.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, just one quick question here. Uh, city manager, how many citizens submitted map have we received so far? Public?
So we've
generated map?
Uh, yeah, councilman, we've received, as I mentioned, 30 community of interest forms and I believe nine maps so far. And so those maps, we'll need to get, you know, back with Chris and, and balance out, you know, the, the population and, and work with him, uh, on, on those maps that we received. You know, again, once we've been talking or discussing this evening, once we get the mapping tool, which, which is really fantastic, um, that moves in real time with boundary lines and, and population and demographics. So that'll be a pretty quick study. You know, I'll look, I'll look to Chris, but I think, you know, we can look at these maps, uh, councilmember, and, and and determine if they meet that criteria that, that the law dictates in terms of population distribution.
And my next question is, when do we get to see them?
Yeah, so once, once we introduce, you know, this very initial draft, we will work with Chris and his group on the maps we've received from the public. And we will get those out to the city council before the, the next meeting on the 25th.
And just to step in, we can, if Mr. Limbs, if you'll send us the, the maps, we can draw them in MapTitude and produce like atlases like you're seeing here with the outlines of the districts and the data table. And we can, I think we can do that and produce that, those nine maps for you by Monday. We just need to get the images of the maps and we can start drawing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's extremely important for the public, in addition to the council, obviously. The public get to see those publicly generated map so that everybody got a chance to see all the, you know, different opinions from different community interests and what, you know, their, their take on how the city should be drawn up. So that's the first comment. And you said, Chris, that you're working towards getting us the online map available, mapping tool available by Saturday?
Yes.
And it's at a pretty firm date?
Yes, it's, there's, I apologize for, for the delay. We're working with District R, which is out of Tufts University. And there's just been some, some January hiccups as they've come back from the Christmas break. And we really apologize for the delay.
Yeah, I think it's extremely important for the public to be able to, you know, create their own map effectively. I mean, there's a lot of community members here who are very interested and very concerned about this whole process. And for them to be able to participate in that is extremely important here. And so if, if we can ask that this mapping tool be available as soon as possible, and I'm sure it's already been communicated many times, but I just want to stress how important it is for the public to have access to it so that everybody can be a part of this process here. And the, what else? Oh, one more thing about all these maps, I think, you know, in terms of my interaction with the public, a lot of people seems to really resonate with the idea that, you know, to the extent possible, as many districts as we can, to be able to both represent the west and the east all the way across the city. So that, you know, every district, to the extent possible, can be, can be able to represent both the west and the east as well as the business commercial corridor in the middle. So therefore, some of the commission, the business interests can also be represented appropriately. So I think that's one element we should consider as we look forward to creating additional maps, you know, whether it's by the public as well as with your organizations. I think that's one element that I think it's very important to all of us. So that's just my comment so far. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Fung. So with that, council comments, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Do we, do we need to vote on that? No, I can just open it. And do we have a public comment?
Hey, Mayor, sorry to jump in. If I may, real quick, this may be helpful before we start public comment. And maybe Chris can answer this question about how precincts play into this at all. And then the other, the other question before the council, as you move into the district formation, is, is the next election in November, what districts will be on the ballot? And so just wanted to keep that in mind. And Chris, I don't know if you have any more to offer, you know, in terms of those two variables?
And so the parcel lines are, I mean, sorry, do you say parcels or precincts?
Precincts.
Precincts. So the election precincts are defined by the county registrar. We like to follow precinct lines when we can, but it's really like the, kind of the fifth criteria, so, or the fourth criteria down the other agency lines. It's really focused on the community of interest line. So if we can, we like to make it easier on the registrar and follow precinct boundaries. But we really want to hear from the public and from you on what communities of interest really need to be kept whole. And if it, you know, undermines a precinct line or, you know, divides a precinct in half, so be it. Because the coy is really the most important. And then on the elections, so these are just arbitrary district numbers, 1 through 5. They, they aren't binding at all on, on, on the council. And one of the last things you'll, you should do is decide on the, the district numbers and then assign each of the districts via an election calendar. So depending on how many council seats are up in '22, that would be the, you know, the district numbers you'd run with, and then the others would be up in '24. So is it 3 and 2, 3 up in '22 and, and 2 up in '24, or the other way?
Other way, 2, 2 and 3.
So 2 and, 2 and 3?
Yeah.
Yeah, so then that's really, and then like the numbers would dictate the election calendar. And that's usually the final action, once you define your district council. Once you decide on a map and the, the specific borders, then you can assign the district numbers and then the elections.
Thanks, Chris. Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to get that clarification out that may be helpful for the public. So thank you.
Awesome. So can we open up the public hearing?
Yep, yes, we can.
And do we have any public comments? It looks we have Nathan Chan. Nathan, you have three minutes, please.
Background noise.
Hi, thank you very much for this opportunity. I'm really excited to hear that the consultant is going to be using District R. It's a pretty easy to use mapping tool. And I know that the San Mateo County, you was using it as a tool. I've been able to play around with it a little bit and understand some of the challenges of the redistricting process. And I actually have some questions, very specific questions about some of the challenges that I faced that can hopefully be answered during this hearing. So first of all, the, it looks like there's a gap at the north end of the city created by Cappuccino High School. Does that mean that on Park Boulevard, if we were to, we can't integrate census blocks across, across Cappuccino? Would that represent a contiguous concern? Similarly, the Green Hills Country Club centered census block sort of creates a very thin line between what's east of that census block and what's west of that census block. You can, I think, draw something contiguous using Lomita Avenue, but it's basically a ribbon. Would that meet the standard for contiguous districts or compact districts or not? And then finally, I tried reproducing the, some of the maps in District R currently. So I tried to reproduce Draft Map B, and I didn't come up with the same percentages of voting age population by race in District R as compared to what was printed out by redistricting partners table. So I just wanted to ask which set of numbers is correct. I know sometimes District R's data can be behind, so, but just wanted clarification of that. In terms of specific sort of feedback on the maps, I, I don't particularly like Draft A or C very much because I do think that they divide some thoroughfares that can be kept together. So I know that some streets can't, have to be divided. For example, it doesn't seem, unfortunately, like Helen Drive can be kept together under most reasonable map configuration. But I do think that Hillcrest and Murchison and Millbrae Avenue can be kept within the same district. And so that's what I think is problematic about Draft, Draft Maps A and C because they are divided, because the two sides of the street are divided. So thanks very much for this opportunity, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Nathan. Do we have any other public comments? Do you think, oh, excuse me, we do, we have Lou. Lou, would you like to have three minutes?
Yes, thank you. It is complicated, is it not? And the council and others have expressed views that districts are not even needed in the right. And I agree. So why are we here anyway? It's been said, we had no choice because of the CVRA. Not true. We had an opportunity to discuss the matter with the constituent who raised the matter and possibly satisfy his concerns in other ways of avoiding this complicated and expensive CVRA thing. The city manager flexibly ignored the opportunity. I asked the mayor tonight, required the city manager to explain tonight why he did this. To say we did not have a choice is false, and he cannot get away with that. It's not a dead horse or a moot point. Given the serious implications of districts, the voters need to know why he did this and why we maybe could have avoided it. Could you please have him explain that?
Is that the end? Lou, are you, you have a minute, you have two minutes left. Did you want to?
I don't need two minutes left. No, I'm finished. Just have, use my two minutes for the city manager to explain why he avoided this opportunity. And now we are in this mess, and maybe we could have avoided it.
Thank you, Lou. Don. Don, would you like to speak three minutes, please?
Yes, thank you. This is Don Dennehy, longtime Millbrae resident. I am totally against this redistricting. I feel that it will conflict of interest for the city council to vote on this when it will directly affect them. And I think that it is a mistake to divide the city into districts that will all be vying against each other, some with more opportunity, some with less. And, and I'm just really against this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lou. Excuse me, thank you, Don. Any other public comment? No other public comment? So with that being said, shall we close the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And we, we're going to go back to council. We have another council comment. Councilmember Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm wondering if we are allowed to see what the public has introduced as communities of interest, if I'm using the right term. It might help us know how the maps were drawn. I also appreciate Councilman Holiver's question on census tracts. I guess I'm, I, I understand the need for the data, but couldn't we follow up? If it looked like a census data, a census track had to be split, couldn't we actually do fieldwork and knock on doors and get population counts so that we might be able to keep our numbers as close to zero difference between the population of the districts and the demographics, but be able to logically keep neighborhoods together based on communities of interest?
So what, I think what I'm hearing from the consensus, and to your comment, Councilmember Schneider, consensus of this council is that they're not really pleased with the maps. And they'd like to see the other maps that were submitted. And with Councilmember Schneider's comment now, like what other groups of interest were submitted as well? And it sounds to me like Chris said, we might be able to see those by Monday via email. And Saturday might include, Monday might include what happens on Saturday with the drawn maps from the, from the public.
Thank you, Mayor. I, and I agree completely with what you said. However, it would be really interesting to see what the city chose as communities of interest because maybe the five of us and previous council members who are, or even planning commissioners who are very familiar with the neighborhoods, we might be finding some community of interests that are not currently on the list. But if we don't know what's on the list, we don't know what's not on the list.
Right. And I think we all have the opportunity to submit those lists. I saw an email somewhat today to, if any, any groups of interest needed to be included. But I'm looking forward to Monday, and with the direction of this council, I think that we can include all of that. Council, excuse me, city manager.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So our, all of the community of interest forms that have been submitted are available at the city's website, configuremillbrae.org. And there's a lot of information on our dedicated website, configuremillbrae.org that addresses some of the, some of the issues that the public has raised. I think Mr. Dennehy, for example, I think this may be the first time he's participated in a public hearing. And there, there's information on California Voters Rights Act, state law, why the city was forced into this to be compliant with state law. And so, and I'm always available to, you know, answer questions to the public as well. Feel free to call me, and I'd be happy to answer any detailed questions. But the community of interest forms are all online at configuremillbrae.org.
Perfect. Well, it looks like we finished up a little bit early here at 10 to 7. With the consensus of the council, we can take a 10-minute break prior to our regularly scheduled council meeting. Is any disagreement to that? City manager, your hands raised. Do you disagree?
Let me pull it down.
All right. So I would like to adjourn this meeting, and I'll see everybody back in 10 minutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.